It's called, yeah. You can still put more questions in while we're waiting, we might as well just answer them if you're done. It doesn't have to be calculations related, you can ask me anything, I'm like fourth year, so I've been there and done everything that you need to do. Give it like an extra minute or two. If you've confused as well, just put it through the chat as well, because then we can spend time on it. Okay, alright, yes, it's sixty two point one. Um, you really need to know how to do this, because where they ramp it up is they're going to start asking you how to do BMI. And this is what they'll, so this is what I mean when they get harder, they'll give you the basic like this, and then in second year, or maybe even first, they'll ramp it up by asking you to do it through BMI, or giving you BNF like extracts to get harder. So this is like the core foundation of it. And when we do, I might do a calculation study session in the future, we'll look at those BNF type of extract questions, because I think that's really helpful. Okay, next one. Think you guys have got it, you guys are fast, yeah, it's two hundred ml. Anyone struggle with that? All good? So essentially, yeah, you've got to figure out what you've got altogether. Find out what your required doses, figure out what is per dose, and you can times it out for what they say. So what's it per day, and then what is it for the full course? Okay, next one. It's good that you guys are struggling, because we can go through it. You guys, whenever I treat you guys, you guys, like a lot of first years hate the concept of weight over volume. Give it like twenty seconds. Right, let's talk about it. Um, so when dealing with these types of questions, you've got to express your volume, like what the percentage expression is. That's always what I, first thing I tell my students. You don't know what that means, express it. So when you express it, twenty five percent weight over volume means that you've got two point five grams in a hundred ml. So it's always, because it's percentage, it's always going to be out of a hundred, like you know every percentage is. They could change that to weight over weight, still is over a hundred, but it's going to be a hundred grams. Okay, so think, when you see percentage weight of volume, think it's a percentage, it's always going to be something out of a hundred. Make sense? So I'm going to convert that to twenty, um, two point five gram in a hundred ml. Um, it wants it in ml, I like to keep everything in one sort of standard metric, so I'm going to convert that four thousand liters into ml as well, so four thousand ml. So with that in mind, all it's saying to you is, essentially, if I get my calculations up, I'll show you here. If you've got a hundred ml, that contains two point five gram, then if I had four thousand ml of it, how many grams would that contain? So you can cross multiply actually. And does everyone know how to cross multiply? Okay, cross multiply is a truly a lifesaver. I'll just quickly go through it. Essentially, you're doing this and this, meaning you times what's across, so you do four thousand times by two point five, and then you divide what's left, and then you get what X is. So if you shove that in the calculator essentially, which is here, you should get the answer is a hundred grams. Yeah, and that's it. Happy to move on? Yeah, this method works for everything, I always cross multiply in everything that I do. You're not supposed to in, in GCSE and A level, you get shouted at by my teacher, but it's just how it norm, it's easy, the easiest way. What do you mean, if it's just weight over volume, would you still cross multiply, or is this the same premise? Yes, so if you had weight, it's in grams and then per ml, so weight over volume is grams per ml, yeah, you're right. That's why I converted that into from liters to ml. Okay, cool, let's move on. Molarity, guys like Molarity? No. I, I put it in here, because they like it in first year. Close, very close. Give it a minute, we'll go through it, that's, the right answer is in here somewhere, someone said the right answer. Do you want to go through it? Is everyone done? Also let me know if you go, I'm going too fast, because I'm trying to keep it as like two minutes, because that's how we normally do calc, two minutes for question. Okay, right. The answer is naught point two, because it wanted it in one DP, but if you said one, naught point two three, yeah, same thing, but just round it up. Okay, that's how, let's see how we do it. First things first, I do things when I do calculations as they're telling me to do it. So it's saying you have calcium chloride solution, ten percent weight over volume. Express that, just express it, just get used to seeing it and expressing it, so it's ten gram in a hundred ml, right? And it's telling you have a two hundred and fifty ml solution. So you can do that cross multiplying thing, where if you know that you've got ten gram in a hundred ml, how much is in two hundred and fifty ml? So when you work that out, you should get twenty five grams, right? Twenty five grams, you end up having a mass. So if I actually get my workings, because if you guys are visual, that would help. So yeah, you've got your ten percent rate of a volume which we've expressed. Um, you want to work out what your mass is in two hundred and fifty ml, so you're going to cross multiply it here. And then essentially, you've got two hundred and fifty times by ten, oh, is equal to two thousand five hundred over a hundred, you end up getting your mass here. Once you've got your mass, you can work out your MR, because they've told you, if they tell you what the compound is, like if it is, even if it's KCl, anything, they've told you what it is, then you can work out the MR of it. And they've given you everything that you need, you worked out the MR and you worked out the mass. Once you've got those two things, then you can put it in the N equals M over MR equation, and then you get the moles from that. Um, a good thing that you need to be careful for is stoichiometry. So stoichiometry is, for example, when you write an expression, for example, like, um, B A C L two, you would need two ions of chlorine, right? So then you'd have to double your answer, because your molar ratio will change, because it's one to two instead. But here, it's fine, it's one to, um, but here, the calcium is a one to one ratio, so you should be fine. So you just need to be aware of that, so it's very chemistry based. Yeah, so with the CL, if they asked you what the moles for CL was, then you would times up. But they're only asking you about calcium, which is a one to one ratio. Yeah? Okay, let's move on. Displacement, some of you may not do displacement in first year, it's fine, if you do it, try and answer, if you don't, have a go. It's fine, displacement is like, I know I did it in first year, but some people do it in second or third, you still need to know it. It's essentially what displacement is, it's like, have you ever reconstituted antibiotics, you know what reconstitution is, right? So reconstitution is, you know, when you have like antibiotics, and you have the powder. Have like a bottle, when you, when you get in a pharmacy, you have a bowl, and you get the powder of antibiotics. You have to essentially pour water in it to, and then shake it, and that's the antibiotic, right? You know that. Yeah, you add water to the powder and it makes antibiotic, this is what the question's asking you about, essentially. How much water do you need to add essentially? Um, because the powder obviously takes up volume in the bottle, right? So even though you have a hundred ml bottle, you don't add a hundred mils of water, because there's powder in there. So like you, you need to figure out how much does that powder in the bottle displace the water in there, so we know how much we can add. So for example, that's why when you go to the pharmacy, it will have like, when you pick up a Moxacillin two fifty by five, um, it will say like, add eighty four point nine ml of water, because then you can figure out, okay, well, the powder in there displaces around ten ml. Does that make sense? Yeah, should we move on? Perfect, yeah, it's sixty, let's have a look. Um. So yeah, there's an equation you can learn for the displacement volume if you get confused. So the space of volume is the final volume minus the volume of water you've added. So we've been told our final volume in our bottle that we want to make overall is a one fifty. And then your water that you've added is ninety, that's what they've told us, so you just subtract the two, and that's how much you know that you essentially, the powder displaces essentially. You'll learn it eventually. Okay. This is another displacement one, but it's a bit harder. We'll give it a minute. Those are faster than I think you would be, you know, well done, yeah, it's nine point five. The equation for displacement volume is final volume minus the water added. You can get it back up here if you want. There. Okay, got it, all right. So yeah, it's nine point five, so you need to find the displacement volume per milligram, that's what I normally do. So if you know that eight milligrams space is naught point one, how much does it, how much does it actually displace per milligram that you've got? Then you can essentially work out that you've got forty, so then you can time milligrams, so then you can times it by the per milligram volume. And then you've got naught point five, you know that your final volume you need is ten mils, and then you can subtract it, yeah. Okay, we've got another nice quantity dispense, guys. Yeah, it's forty five, I'm going to go a bit quicker, because you've got loads of questions to do still. But yeah, to go through this, you've got two hundred and fifty, a milligram in five ml, we want three hundred milligrams, you cross multiply to find it, you've got seven point five ml per dose. Um, you want two doses per day, so times it by two, so you get fifteen ml in the day that they're taking, and then they've got a three day course, so you times that, so you get forty five ml. That's it. Don't stress about the answers, because I'm going to put them up and you can look back at them as well. Okay, got another weight by volume one, this one's a bit trickier. Why, oh my god, why, oh my god. Tanisha, you're, you're fast, you're always like first or second. It's fine, we'll go through it, you guys really don't like weight, like over volume, it's dilutions is expected. Yeah, it's just one in four hundred, we'll go through it. So the thing is. So no, oh my god, good, but I'm happy. So again, I like to just express everything, so one in forty is one gram in forty ml, right? And you've got eighty mil of it, so you can cross multiply it to figure it out, so that you know that in eighty mil of that concentration, you've got two grams of the drug. This means after diluting, we've got, I think with diluting, your drug quantity is never going to change. So if they said I've diluted two gram of a drug, you're moving it out, out, that two gram out, and you're just adding water to it, so that value is going to stay the same regardless, so that's what you need to remember with dilutions, that your quantity, that the drug that you dilute, the amount that is not going to change, but when you add water, the concentration will, that's it. So I can cross multiply again, and then you end up getting four hundred, so yeah. We've got another one. Be a bit quicker on this one, it's not too bad. Thank god, I've just, you're doing good. Like, I'm really impressed, guys. Okay, yeah, it's thirty five. So you look at what you have, we need that cross multiply it to find out you've got two point five ml. You need it twice a day, so five ml per day, you times it by seven, to find out what the whole course is thirty five ml, so yeah, well done. Okay. Cool, yeah, fifteen, not too bad, you just have to kind of work out what you, what it is, cross multiply it times about thirty days, and you get fifteen ml, so yeah, well done. Another one. Let a few more people answer. Then I'll give you the answer. Yep, well done, guys, it's six hundred, right. My go to trick is count down the numbers that you have, so in here, you've got three numbers. So, um, if you've got three, I always think three numbers means I have to use C one V one, equals C two V two. So that's kind of how I use in my head when to use it, because people are like, when do you use it? When it's three numbers, you can use it. So, um, convert everything into something that's nice, well, you want the answer in mils, so convert that into mils. Keep your concentrations in the same nice values that you can actually interpret them in an equation. Um, sometimes I used to convert this to just percentage weight over volumes as well, you can do that, this is just an easier way. Times it out in C one V one equals C two V two, and you should get six hundred ml. A few more I can answer, and then I will tell you what the answer is. Yep, let's just go through it, yeah? So, yeah, it is ten ml, okay. Let's have a look why. So convert everything out, um, yeah, so convert your strengths. Your stock solution is five percent, so that's five grams per hundred ml, and your target solution is one in four thousand, which is one gram per four thousand ml. So if you've got one gram in four thousand ml, and you want, you want to make two thousand ml, you can do cross multiplication to find out the map, the grams amount. Then essentially, you can then work out, if you've got naught point five grams and you want to move it over, you can do the same thing, and then find out you've got ten ml that is required to get, prepare it, essentially. Make sense? Make sense? Oh, we've got a mixing concentration thing. Is this one a harder one, guys? Yeah, we'll go through it. So there is seven point two. Let's have a look at why. What I deal with is again, deal with your concentrations. So get your percentage volumes out. They don't make any sense to me unless they're like this. So they told you that you've got four percent and a hundred and fifty mil of it. So you do four gram in a hundred mil. So if you've got a hundred and fifty mil of it, you can cross multiply it and find that you've got six grams. They also said you've got a hundred mil of twelve percent. Well, you already know that tw- that is twelve grams in a hundred mil, so that's not going to change. So that you can keep that as twelve. So what you have to do when you're mixing concentrations is add up the total volumes that you have and the total mass that you have, and then work it out as a percentage volume. So we know we've got eighteen grams in two hundred and fifty mil. If you know that in a percentage volume, you need to get your actual kind of denominator number back into a hundred to make it a percentage, you only really need to figure out what the rearranged mass is. So you can cross multiply that again to find that there's seven point two grams in a hundred mil. That's it. So you can do that the same for every single mixing concentration ones. So work out what they are individually and then total them up by a volume and mass, and then rearrange it to make it as if it's a percentage volume. Okay. You get stuck on this, count how many numbers, like I said. And then if you know that there's a certain amount of numbers, like I said, then you know what formula to use. It's asking you volume of water. To all of you, double check your answers. Okay, the answer is two fifty mil. Because it's asking you about the volume of water that you're supposed to add with it. So you use C one V one as normal, figure out what you've essentially made, but then the water to add is five hundred minus that two fifty that you've said. And then you get two fifty mil. This, I put this question in on purpose because you, I hate it. I used to always get annoyed when you work it all out and then you have to just subtract it to find out what to add. But it's used to, used to, get you used to those kind of trick questions because they're so annoying. Um, but yeah. We've got another molarity one, guys. They love some, they like this question. So the question, the hint for that one is to now to C one V one. So I can see again that there's three numbers, so one, two, three. So I know to clock in my head, C one V one equals C two V two. Because I know when I tutor a lot of students, they're like, where the hell do you start? So I think in my head, like, where do I start? I don't know what I need to do. So I always say, if you see three numbers, start off with C one V one, C two V two. And then you would have basically worked at the majority and you just subtract to find out the water. Yeah. The, to minus that question, if they ask generally what water to add, you generally have to take away because they want to find out the addition. You've worked out the total volume and what is, you've added. You need to add water on top, so that's why you have to subtract it. This question they like to ask, especially in relation to Gaviscon. Because Gaviscon contains sodium and magnesium salts. Yeah, well done, guys. Naught point naught three five, yeah. So rounding it up, I, you can say naught point naught three six. So yeah, your total mass, uh, mass of potassium per day, do three fifty times by four, you get one thousand four hundred milligrams. Convert that into grams because obviously you need it in grams to use that N equals M over MR. They're giving you the MR of just potassium they want, so that's why it's just thirty nine. You do use it and then you get naught point naught three six moles. Okay. Do you guys do infusion rates as well? Because I'm just looking at the time and I want to get an infusion rate question in. So we can skip a few of them if you want, because you're going to have access to the slides anyway, so you can do the ones we skipped. So we can skip to the infusion rates one. I think I've got like three. Yeah, we'll do twenty one, twenty two and twenty three. I'm gonna upload the slides onto the website, you'll see at the end. Yeah, well done, guys. One point five. Well, I'm gonna skip forward. Okay. Right, have a go at question twenty one. It's an infusion rate one. This one's a bit of a long one. Sorry, guys. Yeah, you guys are right. Well done. It's a bit of a long one because it's in micrograms. But let's have a look. So I always work out what the dosing regimen is. So you do your four micrograms at times by the kilograms that you have to work out what your micrograms per minute are. And then you can need to convert this into hour. So then you times it by sixty to get sixteen thousand eight hundred micrograms per hour. The infusion solution's two hundred milligram in a hundred mil, and you want to get that to micrograms because that's kind of, you get everything in the same unit. Once you do that, you can just essentially do infusion rate is equal to dose per hour divided by concentration. Do that little equation and you get eight point four mil per hour. But yeah, well done. There we go, next, next one. Can you give half a drop? Is that possible? Round up. Yeah, it's thirty eight, guys. Well done. Okay, let's go through it. So yeah, your five hours is in minutes. You know, your drops per mil is fifteen mil, mid fifteen. So then you can actually do drops per minute is equal to seven fifty times by fifteen divided by three hundred to get thirty eight dot drops. So yeah, you can't have half amount of drops, so just kind of like round it up. It kind of reminds me of the GCSE question where you kind of had to work out how many people fit in a coach. And then you couldn't fit like half a person in or something, but you have to round up. Yeah. Okay, we'll do this for the last one. I'm gonna, I'm recording the session, it will go up on YouTube. And I'm gonna put the slides with the answers onto the exact same slides I've got now on the website, so you can get access to it all. They won't tell you to round up in a drop factor question unless um, they say to or you know not to. If it's like, if they tell you to keep it to decimal places. So they'll be explicit. If it doesn't say to put it to D two DP, I normally round up, and that's what normally works, than they should say. To round up unless they don't say to. That's kind of my advice. Like, and I mean, like round up as in if like your number is like five, six, seven and eight. If it's below that, we can go down, like do normal rounding. It's normal to round anyway because when you go into placement, you'll realise that nurses cannot like work out infusion rates. So they'll say, like, to actually put in the syringe themselves, so you'll end up having to round up to the nearest ten anyway. No, they round up. It's actually, this is what I was saying. The nurses, when you practically do it in placement, they'll ask you to round up. Because essentially, if it's worse, and if you're going to underdose the patient, then it's much more of a risk because you're not hitting the right threshold. But you're not rounding up so much, like with paediatric doses, like, let's say you had seven, thirty seven point eight, we'd rounded up to forty. It's not going to really affect anyone if it's already up by three grams anyway by an IV infusion. Yeah, and the answer is sixty seven, guys. So well done. Okay, so this is a little equation I have, drops per minute equals volume times drop factor to eat over time. But yeah, okay, we haven't gone through all the questions because I did skip a few. But again, I'm gonna put them on the website and I'm gonna um, put the recording on YouTube. I'm gonna stop the recording as well.